From the southeastern corner of Western North Carolina, this is Polk Lore. I'm your host, James Hernishen. This is the fifth in a series of interviews with candidates for the Polk Schools Board of Education. If you haven't already listened to the first interview with Mike Ashworth, I recommend you'd run through at least the first few minutes as I supply an overview of the elections, which seats are up for grabs, and an explanation of why I'm interviewing some of the candidates and not others. In this episode, I talk with Judy Jackson, who has been a member of the board for Cooper's Gap for 20 years. She's facing a challenge this year from Dee O'Brien, who I interviewed in the previous episode. A few hours before September's board meeting, Judy and I talked at Tar Heels Pavilion in Hendersonville, where she works as the office manager. Judy Jackson, thanks so much for joining the podcast.
Thank you for having me.
The first question we want to get into is just talk about yourself. Why you've been on the Board of Education for so long? Because it's not particularly a thankful position, is it?
No, sir, it's not. Sometimes we do have people that get upset with us. But I continue to have a personal interest for being on the school board. I have children that's went through the school system, and I also have grandchildren that's in the school system now, from the elementary, middle school to high school level. I want to help in serving and improving the quality of our school system. And I want to help with the budgets of our school system to ensure taxpayer dollars are well spent. Being on the school board is not about getting thanks or credit. It's about the children of Polk County getting the best education that they can get for the current, the future, and the present. Serving on the school board is an honor that I do not take lightly. It's one that I want to make a difference in our schools and the community. And I find it rewarding to serve on the school board for I get to see the many accomplishments that our students has from the past, the present, and the future. And I serve as a leader for our community and for our students. And that's why I continue to want to be on the school board.
Well, it is an interesting question about wanting to continue that legacy because I think everyone in Polk County agrees that we've got great schools, right? And you've been on the school board for how long?
20 years.
So you can take at least portion of the credit in a sense that you've had excellent superintendents. You've worked closely with them. And we've got this school district that keeps scoring right up at the top of the districts in the whole state.
That is correct. We have scored within the two, top two, and this year is top three.
Right. But the last two and a half years have been a little bit different.
Yes, sir.
And with the advent of COVID and then the increased attention that some political forces have paid to school boards. And it's created a whole different vibe when you go to a school board meeting. I know that up until recently, very few people showed up to school board meetings, right?
That is correct.
And they probably did that because why tinker with what's going well? But now we have a little bit more conflict going on. And I like to find out why everyone who's running is prepared to deal with that kind of... I mean, some of it's not pleasant.
That is correct. I think that when the pandemic hit, nobody was ready for it. Not even, you know, our community, our schools, because we had never had that in the past. So you have to figure out what works and what does not work. And so that's leads to discussion between the communities and the parents and the students because nobody knew what was going on, how it affected anybody, or how it was on effect them in schools. Nobody ever thought that you would be going virtual during that time. And so having to work through that is a challenge. But I think that we done the best that we could to go through that challenge to make sure that every student was, had the documents that they needed. If it was some people in our community did not have internet access, so they had to do paper documents. So the teachers were there to make sure that the students that did not have internet access had the paperwork to do. And they followed up with them with phone calls. And the ones that did have internet was able to do the virtual. And the students still achieved... Yes, it was hard for students not having that ability and not being in an in-class setting because I think that in-house, in-class settings really make a difference in a child's life.
Do you personally take anything away from the last couple of years? Like lessons on how you see your role on the board? And I talk specifically about things like dealing with these unanticipated problems like a pandemic. Because although nobody on the board is an epidemiologist, obviously, you're tasked with taking recommendations from the state and either modifying them or adopting them according to the needs of Polk County. And it was difficult, right? It was not an easy task. So have you changed anything about the way you approach those kind of issues?
Well, I think one is we had to listen to the public and the community and the students. The students know what they need to accomplish in the classroom. And teachers do too. I think the takeaway from the pandemic is to look at future pandemics, to look at future things that could occur that could cause a disruption in your school system where you didn't have it for 20 years. You know, it was surprising. And there is a lot of things we had to work through. We had to work through children getting the education that they needed in just a short distance of time because the state put this mandate on us that we weren't prepared for of what it was going to be like without children in schools. So I think you learn a lot from that. And you have to look at the future and continue to see what you can do to build a better school system if this happen again, which we hope it don't.
I don't think anybody wants to see this happen again. Okay, well, let's talk about specifics about what you can do as a member of the Board of Education. The state basically sets most of the parameters, right? It determines how much you can pay the teachers within a certain range. It determines what the curriculum is, more or less. So what among those narrower range of things that you can do as a school district, what do you want to focus on for the next term, assuming you're elected?
Well, I think focusing on the children's education. If it's through getting them college courses to take or if it's to do technical programs. I think there's not all children that want to go to college. So you have to have avenues for them, career readiness, so that they can go out into the workforce and work. If that means through the ag center. We have a wonderful ag program at the high school. We have carpentry and nursing. I think those are roles that the children can go into because I do feel like that we have the school that lets them be able to get college courses while they're at the high school to help on finances for the parents. But not every child will go to college. So we have to focus on both of the children. And that's what I want to do in this next role too, is continue to focus on how we can meet all the needs of the students, not just the college-bound ones.
What I'm interested in is, do you think anything needs to be changed? I mean, obviously, as an incumbent who's been there for a long time, you're probably pretty happy with the current trajectory or the current balance of priorities. But is there something that you'd like to see changed?
I would say just more communication with the parents and the staff. And, you know, get that feel, more feel of what they're needing and what they want. I think that's a change that everybody can improve on.
Well, you know, everyone I've talked to in this race has said more or less the same thing about the need to improve the relationship, the communication avenues between the board and the general public. Do you think that we need maybe a new mechanism? Like, I don't know, a quarterly forum? Or something that's outside of the regular business meetings that you have, where people get three minutes at the end to say things, but there's no back and forth, right? There's no conversation going on in the official board meetings?
I think one is for a parent who has a concern, they should bring it to the, first to the teacher of the school, and then to the principal if they can't get a resolution through the teacher, and then to the superintendent. The board gets it after if they want a hearing with the board so that the board can hear and then both sides of the party. Say if it was with the principal or with the teacher or even the superintendent, then if the parent is not happy with that decision, they can bring it to the board. And then we discuss it at a hearing. Now, I do think that, you know, public input is important. And I do think that the public needs to be able to communicate with the school system. But I do think that there is protocols that needs to be followed if they have a problem in the school. Because, you know, when you're talking about teachers or students, that has to be confidential for some things where you just don't talk about it in the school board meetings. So there's always a place and a time.
It sometimes seems in the last year and a half or two years that some of the comments brought up during public comment sessions weren't according to protocol, right? They were kind of pushing it and bringing up issues, perhaps kind of blindsiding board members with direct quotations from books they were unhappy with or specific policies instead of going through the steps that you're talking about. Do you feel that perhaps the public needs to understand that protocol better?
I do. I think that they need to know what protocol to go through. We do have all of our policies up on the website now so they can go and look at any policy to see the steps that they need to follow. And when I'm talking to parents out into the public and they ask me about a concern, say a parent might call me about a student at school or a teacher, the first thing I say is, have you talked with the teacher? Have you tried a resolution with the teacher? And then I tell them the steps. If you haven't talked to the teacher, please go to the teacher, either write a letter, write an email, ask for a meeting. And then I ask them, if you can't get a resolution, go to the principal of the school. And then if you can't get a resolution there, then you have the right to go to the superintendent. If you can't get a resolution with any of those, then ask for a hearing. And then the board will have that hearing. But if you go through and tell me everything, then I've heard your side, but I haven't heard the other sides. And so when it comes to the hearing, then I would ask for me to step down off of that since I've been by this and heard one side. So I try to make it to where they follow the protocols to where if it does come to a hearing with the board, then the board can hear it with no this side, that side, that they have an open mind. And I think that's what we have to do is keep an open mind.
Well, this process works really well if it's a specific issue between a parent, you know, and the teacher, for instance. But when you talk about larger policy issues, it looks like a lot of people are unhappy with the general way in which certain issues are being handled. And these aren't student-specific issues. These are school-wide issues. And this is why people are coming straight to the board.
And they've got to know that some of our policies are state-written. We have to follow those protocols. Now, some are local, but most of them are state-written. And those are the protocols that they give us to follow.
And there's really nothing much you can do about that.
That is correct.
Right. I'm still trying to find a constructive suggestion for how the public can understand how it's supposed to relate to the board and the schools in general. I mean, you can say people should know what's on the website and you should know how to follow the steps at escalating a problem. But it just seems to me that there needs to be a better outreach effort by the schools, the school district and the school board, to let the people, remind the public of how they're supposed to do things.
I agree with that. I think weekly newsletters would help. I know that Mr. Green does a lot of on-calls weekly to tell the students and the parents, hey, this is happening or this. And maybe tell them at that time, hey, the policy has been updated with this policy since the last time you might have looked at it. You might want to go and look at it. So those can be avenues to look at.
Okay. I just find it very interesting that all of the candidates I've talked to have identified this communication issue as really critical. And you think that's because we've just went through a couple of years of a lot of frustration? And I think it's on both sides, both the public and the school board, not really knowing how to find answers to unprecedented challenges.
I do. I think the pandemic caused a lot of concern for parents and for the school board itself. We had never been in a pandemic. And trying to communicate everything with the parents at that time was hard. And so I think a lot of questions got brought up that not the parents or the school board was prepared at that time for. And I think it is a learning curve because anytime that you have a pandemic or something that hits that you're not aware of, then you've got to figure it out. And you've got to see what can work and what cannot work and how moving forward that you can communicate better with all aspects. It doesn't mean if it's just a student or a teacher, but also with the community and let those parents know that you do care about them.
Well, again, I don't think any parent would disagree with that. But if you go look at certain issues, like last year ago, when, I guess in August of 2021, when the Delta variant of COVID was just sneaking up on us. And the school board voted six to one to not require masks despite the advice of the state, right? And then a few weeks later, you had to close down three schools because the COVID positive rate was going through the roof. I think that really drove a wedge between some members of the community and people who felt that you didn't follow the expert advice. And because you weren't experts, you should have followed that advice. And other parents who were very concerned about making sure that their kids were staying in school. Because the one thing we come out of COVID, everyone agreeing is kids got to be in school. The virtual thing doesn't work for an awful lot of kids, right?
I agree with that.
So can you explain to me what the thinking was on the board? Why did you decide to reject the advice of the state?
Well, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and not the board. I do feel like that the parents should have the opportunity to decide what their children do, whether a mask or a non-mask. I feel like that some children might have a problem wearing a mask with asthma or other health issues that could affect that. And I do think that the parents have that right to choose if their child wants to wear a mask or not. Yes, I do know that the state mandated a mask.
Well, the state recommended that you adopt a mandatory masking.
Right. And so I do believe that parents have that right. And so that's why I was born not wearing a mask is because I thought that the parents should have the right to wear a mask or not.
But if we had to go through the same thing again, knowing what we know now, that a lot of parents did exercise that right not to have their children wear masks. And as a result, the schools had to shut down.
Well, I also think that it wasn't only because of the masks that the schools were shutting down. You say with the shots, there were students that were coming in that had COVID-19 that had the shots that was bringing it into the classrooms. Even though people were wearing masks, they were still getting it. The masks were not protecting them like it should because it was not a fitted mask. So, you know, everyone has their rights versus if they want a mask or not, or if they want a shot or if they don't. And so that, to me, that is the parent's right for the child.
So you would do the same thing another time around?
I would. I mean, speaking on behalf of myself and not the other board members, I would go down the same avenue as what I went down due to the fact I believe that a parent has that right. And it's not that I'm against people that wear masks. I believe that they have that choice. I just feel like that the masks were not helping protect the children because even though the people who were wearing masks, all of them at one time, those masks were still sending them home. They were getting quarantined with the masks on. And so they weren't staying in school at the same time. So that was a decision that I had to make.
Okay. Well, clearly, you've thought about it carefully, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I mean, I think that's mostly what people are hoping, that you do think about these things and not just act arbitrarily or according to whatever pressure you're hearing from your circle of friends or whatever.
That is correct. I want to listen to both sides and hear both sides of the story before I make any ruling. It doesn't matter who's speaking out in the public. I want to hear from the people who were wearing masks to the people who were not wearing a mask. And I want to keep an open objective to that. I feel like that's how you build on the board. And I think that's a strong relationship between the parents. But at the end of the day, the school board has to make a decision. And you have to do what you feel is the best interest for the students at that time.
Just a slightly related question. And I don't know if it's fair to ask this, but, you know, it was the state that gave the school boards the responsibility of making that decision about masks. The state could have said, no, everyone's got to wear masks. Take that decision out of your hand. Would you have preferred the state?
It should have never been a school board decision to make.
I think there's a lot of agreement on that one.
Yes.
Okay. The third issue that I wanted to talk about was the one that's right before the board now. I think you're having a meeting this evening, right?
Yes, sir.
And you're going to discuss how the school responds to challenges to books and other materials when a parent is not happy with a book being taught, for instance. Now, the school board has kind of gone back and forth over this over the last little while. First, you had a policy of basically removing, I think it was 16 different books, and having them reviewed by a committee. And now there's a new plan to sort of look at them one by one. How are you feeling about the way you've dealt with this issue?
Well, all of a sudden, it started out with 16 books. It's now 43 books.
Oh, okay.
So there's a lot more books to review. Instead of going through the protocols to say there is an issue with a book in the school, it was brought with loud noise into the school board, reading out some of these books that they saw from other counties. So the board did not have any knowledge that there was a book in the school at that time because we don't select the books. You know, that's in the school system. So the protocol should have been first is go to the principal of that school and say, we know that you have books in your school system. Would you review these books? And give them a list of books. When you're getting hit with 40-some books, you have to form a committee. You have to review those books. And the public has to give time for those books to be reviewed. They were not wanting to do that. They wanted to have an answer right then. Well, with me not reading the books, I couldn't give them an answer because I didn't know what was in the books. Because I was just getting the notebook and the loud noise into the school board rooms of saying the wrong words for children to hear in a public setting and not knowing what was in those books or having them be reviewed. And I think that they need to fully go through the protocol of saying, this book is in question. I would like for you to look at this book and then come back with a solution. Either is this book worth pulling off the shelf or is it worth staying into the library?
So you weren't just as surprised as anybody when people showed up and started reading passages from these books? Because a lot of criticism has been made of that strategy in that many of those books were actually written with the goal of being very helpful to kids. I mean, there was one book that's written by a guy named John Green. And he was talking about, in this book, about two young kids kind of exploring their sexuality and then concluding that they weren't ready to have sex. But the only part that was read at the school board meeting was the part where they were, you know, plotting their plans to explore their sexuality. They didn't read the part, the next page, which showed them saying, no, 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 we're not ready for this. It's making us too uncomfortable. I would think that would be a very good lesson to teach, or not to teach, to allow kids to explore because that book wasn't mandatory. It was just part of the school board collection.
Well, a lot of people don't realize that not every book that is in the library is ever checked out. Most of those books, I've asked for the last 10 years. How many books have been checked out in the last 10 years that is on that list? It was less than 1%. And so that said a lot. You know, a lot of children were not even knowing that those books are in there. And now that it's come public before a school board meeting, that's going to make children interested and say, hey, I hear this is in this book. Maybe I want to go read this book. So, but I think that now there is a policy in place that, and we're writing on the second reading tonight of a new policy, where if there is a book in question or a curriculum that is in question, that the students can, or the parent can come and do a written letter to the teacher or the principal or to the media and say, I would like this book reviewed. They will form a committee. They will review that one book at a time. And it will make it quicker and faster for the public to get an answer, still having to go through 40-some books at one time.
And I think the whole board is basically in agreement that this is the better way to proceed, right?
Yes.
Right. Where do you think, if the kids weren't checking these books out, though obviously the parents weren't seeing these books, where did this list of 43 books come from?
I believe that the list started with other school systems and the public hearing about other school systems where parents were bringing these books to their attention. And then that's how it got to Polk County. I do feel like that people need to know that even though there are books in the school system and to the library, not all of those books might not have been ordered by Polk County. Those could have been, say, if a teacher was teaching one curriculum and they ordered a book, then there could be a package of books that come with that that are never used. And then they're put somewhere in the school system, say like to the library. So not just because those books were there doesn't mean that they were ever touched. Because with the last couple of years, we didn't have a media specialist. Now we have a media specialist to be able to look at those books as they come in to review what's in there and know if it's good or bad for the school system.
That's one thing that came out of this whole debate is now we have a media specialist, right?
That is correct.
And probably should have had one a long time ago.
That is correct. But when you have fundings that cut staff members, then you have to make a decision whether to have a teacher in a classroom or a media specialist. And so teachers in the classroom are first and foremost.
Well, it's nice that we did manage to find the funding for a media specialist.
Yes, sir.
So, and I mean, I'm hopeful that the new process and the creation of a new position will head off more of this acrimonious arguments over these type of things.
I think it will.
Now, how do you feel personally, though, about some of these books? I mean, you don't have time to read them. Who has time to read 43 books, right? Do you share any of the concerns about some of these books?
Well, right now, I'm waiting on the review because I don't want to go into full detail until we have the review back. Because then you're putting your own opinion in without hearing from the committee to see what's in these books. Yes, I have heard one side that's brought it to the school board, but I haven't heard back from the committee yet of what their findings are. So I don't want to make any assumptions until I have both options before me.
Well, you have made it clear in other public forums that you're a little uncomfortable with certain subjects.
Yes. I would say, me personally, not speaking on behalf of the board because of my religious background, I do feel like that nudity, if a picture is shown in a book of somebody having sex, I don't feel like that should be for elementary children, middle school children. I feel like that that should be either taught at home or later in life. So that's my personal belief. But sometimes I have to take my personal beliefs out to look at the overall picture. Yes, I have said in forums that I wouldn't want my child reading that type of material just because of my religious background. I do feel like that there is a purpose for everything. And that, yes, there are some parents who don't care what their child reads or they want their child to read it instead of hearing it from them at home. Again, that's a parent's right. Me personally, for my children, I wouldn't want them to see nudity in the books.
Sure. But there is a process in place. If a parent doesn't want their child to be, have to read a book, then they don't have to read it, right?
That is correct. They can opt out of that right to do so.
And the other... And all the other parents who aren't, who don't have a problem with that, then they aren't affected by it.
That is correct.
Right. So it's almost like, what's the problem?
I think right now what the problem is, is all of these books have been brought to question just during this pandemic time. And all of them were brought at a one meeting. It started out with 16 books and has went to over 40 some books. So I think that parents are concerned. You do have parents that are concerned about what is being taught to their children. They want to know more. They want to find out how their child is being taught in the school system to see if it does go against what they believe. I do think that parents do have a right under the federal law to question anything.
Sure.
They, they have a right to look at the materials that's in our school system that's being taught. And they do have a right to opt out or go with it. So it basically goes back to the parents of who wants their child learning that and who does not.
What about the notion that a lot of parents seem uncomfortable with the general direction of, of education in this country when it comes to, you know, kind of sensitive subjects like gender issues and how we teach the history of race relations? I mean, people are using the term critical race theory, but that's, that's a graduate level law school course, right? We don't do that.
No, Polk County does not create, teach critical race theory.
Not too many school districts would. But things about gender, we're talking about trans kids or the LGBTQ community. These are issues that some people are uncomfortable with because it does conflict with a religious point of view. But how should the schools, should the schools be, be taking that into account?
Well, I truly believe that all children have a right for education. I don't think that children, transgender or other children, a male or a female, if you have a female basketball team and you have a male basketball team, I believe that males should play on male basketball teams because it makes a disadvantage to the females. So that is the issue that I have, is I don't want the females to have a disadvantage in the sporting arena when it comes to a male going to a female or vice versa. Because as you know, a male is more dominant in sports. So that is my biggest fear is that it will take away from the female sporting arena of them being able to play sports and compete. Because we have a lot of wonderful athletic women that enjoy the sport. And if you have a lot of male dominance that's come over to be a female, then that makes a disadvantage for the ones that are competing.
Well, certainly the sports community in the, around the world is, is having trouble dealing with this issue. And I don't know that anybody's figured out how we're going to resolve the problem of transgender athletes playing. But what about the general sense of acceptance in the school? I mean, the second episode of this podcast series, I talked to a transgender student who did not feel that, that they were getting a lot of support. And they felt uncomfortable because they, they, they weren't being accepted for who they were.
I think in the past, it's never been an issue because it was always silent. It never came out into the public saying their transgender role. I think more of that is coming out and more is having to be discussed. I think that each person in the school system is unique in their own way. And that each person, again, has a right for education. We might not always approve of what each person does. You might have a white child versus a white child that don't like what the other one is. Or a black versus black or transgender. But you still have to get along. God tells us to love everybody. He doesn't tell us to hate one or another. We might not always approve of their status. And that could be with anybody, but we still have to love them.
And as a public official on the school board, you can't really allow your personal religious convictions to change that fundamental principle, right?
No, I basically look at all avenues. Like I said, I think all children has a right to have an education, no matter who it is. I do think that we have to look at all avenues when it comes, like I said, to sports issues. I think that would be a topic that I would have to look at to say, you know, I want what's best for that team. As I spoke earlier about, you know, if you have a male that changes to a female and plays on a female sport, then I think that is a disadvantage to our female population. And so at that time, I would have to look at all avenues.
Well, again, this, it is a very tricky one. And I don't envy anyone who has, who's charged with making those kinds of decisions. So I think it's a good place to wrap up. You've just made a strong defense of every child's right to an education, which really is the fundamental responsibility of a school board.
That is correct. That is, my role is to make sure that every child in Polk County has the right to have a good education. And that's what we want. Serving on the board is not about me being on the board as a person. It is about how I can help these students get the best education that they can get in Polk County schools that will help them in the present, the future, and in their whole life. Because we, we want them to grow and succeed.
All right. Well, thanks so much for finding the time.
Thank you.
That was Judy Jackson, the current member of the board for Cooper's Gap. In the next episode, I'll be talking with Sheri Page, who's a current member for Green Creek. Thanks for listening. And as always, you can get ahold of me at jamesh@polklaw.com with your feedback and suggestions.